What's up guys, so welcome and welcome back. So in today's video, we're talking about this. So says here, open mouth, put foot in, Acosta appointed Sabilico to the calls by planet commission in two thousand twenty one, and he is now vice chairman by Steve Protuski. Now that's the only thing that I am disappointed in Acosta, everything else you did a great job, but appointing him, I don't think so. Come on, let's, let's let's get real folks. Okay, so it says here, Carlsbad council candidate stumbles out of the gates. Council hopefuls first robo text went sideways in an announcement for his district two candidacy. Also, another candidate comes forward indeed to Carlsbad attaching a candidacy to Nathan Fletcher, the disgraced former San Diego County supervisor doesn't appear to be the launching point a polit- uh, a political candidate would want. But that is how it started for Carlsbad planning commissioner Kevin Sabilico, twenty five years old, who announced his campaign for the district two city council seat in two thousand twenty four. On Tuesday, Sabilico sent a robot text to hundreds, perhaps thousands of residents inside, outside and outside Carlsbad to announce his campaign. The image was of Fletcher who was being sued by a former San Diego metropolitan transit system employee for uh, a s- um, sexual assault and harassment. Sabilico though laughed off the blunder by joking, or perhaps not, that he wouldn't have to pay his uh text vendor for the obvious mistake. He said the mistake was on the vendor's part and not associated with his campaign. Okay, uh, the, the back channels of political sources were swift as many cannot believe the massive blunder for the twenty five year old counsel hopeful, especially for someone with years of political experience working on campaigns. So here is the text. I'm glad this is going viral and I'm glad that he is becoming infamous. Kevin Sabilico is who I'm talking about. I'm glad he's becoming infamous in this situation because I mean, come on. You know what I'm saying? So not only he sent this, this text out to Nathan Fletcher, but he also sent out this text um, to hundreds of thousands of other people, it says, right? So let's read the text. It says, hi, Thomas, Kevin Sabilico here. I wanted to uh, or no, Thomas, who's Thomas? Anyway, so he writes, hi, Thomas, it's Kevin Sabil- Kevin Sabilico here. I wanted to personally let you know I'm running for Carlsbad county city council as the planning commissioner and school site council president. Okay, um, the woman Gracia Ferrera has accused Fletcher of sexual assault and harassment along with their retaliation of claims against him and MTS. The Fletcher Fletcher was the chair of MTS and admitted to a consensual relationship in March, but denied any wrongdoing as a result of this, of the suit. Fletcher resigned from the board of supervisors on May fifteenth, laying waste of his political career. And so, uh, here we have uh, Kevin Sabilico tweeting, okay, I don't look that much like Nathan Fletcher. All right, cool. Uh, Sabilico, um, though has been involved with the democratic politics for years, starting working on Congressman Michael Levin's, uh, Democrat California first congressional run in two thousand eighteen. More recently, he was in campaign manager for state Senator Kevin Blakespear. Democrat for Minnesota in two thousand twenty two, assisted with Carlsbad councilman Teresa Acosta's twenty twenty campaign, steered, uh, San Clemente mayor, uh, Chris Duncan to victory in two thousand twenty and worked on Duncan's failed assembly run in two thousand twenty two. Note, San Clemente rotates there's each year. So let me get this straight. So he goes around different cities. Okay, here's the thing. No, 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 I mean, come on. So he claims he's doing all these things. Okay, whatever. Okay, so he says, uh, that, uh, he's also worked as a field representative for Mike Bloomberg's failed bid for president of the United States in two thousand twenty. So I mean, that I can believe. So he worked as a field representative for Mike Bloomberg. Okay, let's just reread, let's just reread that part and then continue reading and then we'll talk more afterwards. He also worked as a field representative for Mike Bloomberg's failed bid for president of the United States in two thousand twenty and was an intern for disgraced former supervisor Dave Roberts. In two thousand fifteen, the board of supervisors paid three hundred and ten thousand dollars to three former staffers who accused Roberts of making his staff do political work and personal errands on the county's dime. Had an improper relationship with an assistant and tried to mislead uh, a human resource sources investigation into his practices by offering a staff member to raise and promote and promotion according to the coast news. Sabilico also worked on the failed supervisor run of Janessa Goldbach, Goldbeck this summer in a special election primary to fill Fletcher's seat. Goldbeck ran against San Diego County, San Diego city councilwoman Monica Montgomery Sepp, a Democrat and Republican Amy Reichart and Paul McGee. Goldbeck finished third as Montgomery step and Richard will face off in the November seventh general election. However, controversy consumed Goldbeck's campaign with allegations from a mailer called racist by Montgomery steps supporters. Sabilico meanwhile didn't consult with Fletcher on certain issues, but remained quiet on the scandal. Sabilico also works for amplify campaigns, which is owned by Dan Rotz- Rotzen stretch. A heavy hitter within the Democratic Party who ran Fletcher's two thousand eighteen and two thousand twenty two supervisor campaigns among dozens of local, other local state na- and national races. So real quick here, before we move on. Is this somebody that we want representing Carlsbad even now as he is um, on the uh that board? He's vice chair. I mean, do we really want somebody who half the time is failing? Uh, candidates and half the time he's more so failing candidates. More of them, the, the, he's, okay, so the more he's failing them. And uh, So half the time he's failing them more so than the other half. Very little, he's not failing them. So um, is Kevin Sabilico really somebody we want representing Carlsbad? At all, even him being right now on planning commission, come on. And honestly, Teresa Acosta appointing him to the planning commission is the only worst thing that Teresa Acosta did. So thank God, that's the only wrong thing she's ever done. But I mean, outside of politics, Kevin Sabilico is all right, but as far as politics are concerned, he shouldn't be in politics. I'm sorry. I mean, I like the kid. He's nice and all. Um, but I, i- is he really somebody we really want running? Is he really somebody that, you know, would represent Carlsbad? Well, I don't think so. So let's continue reading on guys. So it says in his email announcements, Sabilico said as plan, as a planning commissioner, I've worked to make housing more affordable, make our streets safer, strengthen our water infrastructure and cut red tape for small businesses. I'm testing, I'm tested and ready to deliver progress on day one. Now, do we honestly really believe that? No, I don't. Sorry. On his campaign website, which we'll look at. He said his platforms, top priorities consist of public safety, addressing homelessness, affordability and quality of life. Small businesses, small business and economic development, environmental conservation, gun violence prevention, the right to choose abortion, and he is against Senate Bill Ted, but re- regarding SB nine, he will make sure those housing developments fit with the city's character. Acosta appointed Sabilico to the Carlsbad planning commission two thousand twenty one. And he is now vice chairman. He was also alternate on the city's citizens growth management committee appointed by Levin to be a presidential elector for the forty ninth district, a school site council president, altar server, Saint Elizabeth Senate Catholic Church, Little League umpire and science Olympia coach, according to his website. As for uh, challengers, according to the city of Carlsbad website, Kevin Shin is also seeking the district two seat. Shin is a twelve year US Marine veteran, a fire captain with the Culver City Fire Department and owner of the switchboard restaurant. At North County Roast Roastery and art inspired KNVS bar in Oceanside, according to a profile in the coast news. In addition, he serves on the boards of the Oceanside Museum of Art Chamber of Commerce and the city's public broadcasting station, KOS, K- KOC T. Shane also co-founded the Southern California Asian and Pacific Islander Festival this year in Oceanside. So first see who is Kevin Shin? See, what does he look like? Okay, that's Kevin Shin right there. Hey, look, in all honesty, it's better. Now we're going to be choosing between Mona Gacken, Kevin Shin, Carolyn Luna. Because we should not have Kevin Sabilico. I'm sorry. I still stand by that. I still stand, stand by my decision. And also guys, guess what? Guess what? Um, you know, when I look at people's uh, websites. You know, and uh, I, I am doing this to help you guys make a smart decision to not vote for this individual. And uh, it worked out great last year. It's gonna work out again this year. So let's keep it up, guys. So anyway, so let's look at this website here. So um, he writes why I'm running Carlsbad families deserve leadership. They'll protect our open space, maintain our pristine firmament, blah, 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 whatever. Um, this is probably just his video. We're not gonna show, we're not gonna give that attention to him. Um, Kevin knows, okay, blah, blah, blah. I highly doubt that. Highly doubt that. Highly doubt that. Highly doubt that. He's gonna do all that. So he's asking for ten dollars, twenty five dollars, fifty dollars, a hundred dollars, twenty five dollars, other. Um, here's his tweets. So he writes, big news, I'm running for Carlsbad city council from my early days as Little League umpire and altar server to bring to being an advocate for reproductive rights with Planned Parenthood Generation Action in college. You know, right? My journey has always been about sadness. Yeah, right. So I mean, paid for by Sabilico. The city councils were twenty four. Look. You know, he's not, let's look at the endorsements here. Tony Atkins, really? Catherine Blakespear, really? Here's my message to Catherine Blakespear. Tony Atkins. Marnie Vaughn Willpert. Tony Krantz. And Kathy Rawlings. Here's my message to you guys. One, I know you guys, I know you guys are super smart. Tony Atkins, Catherine Blakespear, Marnie Vaughn Willpert, Tony Krantz and Kathy Rawlings. I know all of you are super, super smart. And know what to do, know and know what not to do, but do not endorse him, unendorse him. Because he is not somebody that we want. I'm sorry. I like you, Tony Atkins. I like you, Catherine Blakespear. I like you, Marnie Vaughn Willpert. I like you, Tony Krantz. And I like you, Kathy Rawlings, but do not trust this kid. He thinks he is, he thinks that he could be the young kid on city council. No, I'm sorry. He's like doing everything for attention. So I'm sorry. I'm sorry. No. So community leaders, oh, wow. Oh, wow. Stephanie Wells and Nikki Fattick do not unendorse him. Unendorse him now. I'm serious. Look, let's look at all the elected officials. Unendorse him, Tony Atkins. Unendorse him, Catherine Blakespear. Same with you, um, Tony Krantz. See who else on here? Chuck Lorre, I don't care about. Uh, Marnie Vaughn Willpert, please unendorse him. Kathy Rawlings, unendorse him. Yeah, unendorse him. Events, let's see. Coming soon. Yeah, okay. All over Carlsbad. Okay. So this is district two. Wow, it's big. So uh, let's see. District two. So if you live in Timorac points, Cavalera Hills, Robert Robertson Ranch, Rancho Carlsbad, Carlsbad Ranch, Bresky Ranch, Kelly Ranch and portions of La Costa Greens, Rancho Corilla and Point Setia. It contains also, if you also live in Palmer Airport, Legoland area, uh, Car Country area. Um, the Agua Hadonia Lagoon area. Uh, the municipal golf course area, Agador to Community Park area, near Sage Creek High School. If you live anywhere in those areas, do not vote for Kevin Sabilico. I am serious. What kind of news does he have? Let's see. What does it say on here? It says that, okay. And he's using this as part now, like, come on. This is district one. So already from the get go, look. You know, it tries to have a cool logo. That's not a cool logo. Um, right here, this is uh, the village area. So only the candidates, so only candidates that are running for district one. Right? And every single election for district one candidates can use this uh, picture right here of, of Carlsbad because it's in that district. So district one. Candidates only allowed to use this because it's in village area. And why did he use it as Christmas lights on it? Why did Kevin Sabilico choose a choose a uh, picture of only that is illegal to have on your campaign, right? Um, when it's not even in your area. This is not, village is not in his area. His, he's a district two. Kevin Sabil- Mr. Kevin Sabilico lives in district two. And so, you know, this, and again, also, why is he not only using this that is in, that is in the village area? But not only that, but also he is um, but uh, also um, you know, he's, why is he using a Christmas one? So right from the get go, Kevin Sabilico is using a picture that is from district one area. So it, it, and also the, why is he using a Christmas one? This is ridiculous. Do not vote for Kevin Sabilico if you live in district two. So let's look at a bounce page here. Real community leadership caused by planning commissioner, caused by citizens growth management committee member alternate. Presidential elector for four hundred and conestra dis- congressional district, school site council president, altar server, Saint Elizabeth Senate Catholic Church. Little League umpire and science Olympia coach. If you were, if he was really, if he really was a coach, he was really an umpire. I feel so sorry for you. And um, if he really was, you know, an altar server at this Catholic church, I feel sorry for you. If he was a, really was a school site council president, I feel sorry for you. You know, and, and, and Mike Levin, if he really did work for you, I, I feel so sorry for you. I really do. And if you really was a Carlsbad and citizens growth management committee member, I feel so sorry for everyone that had to deal with him. And calls that planning commission. I couldn't even watch anymore of that video. Cause he's telling, he's now like, uh, you know, telling people what to do. That's his job now, I guess. So if you live in district two, uh, votes for Mona Gacken, vote for Carolyn Luna or now vote for Kevin Sheen or whatever his name is. Um, what does it say? What is his name? Yeah, Kevin Shin. So for Kevin Shin, vote for Kevin Shin. Vote for uh, Mona Gacken or vote for uh, to keep Carolina there. Um, now that there's another person added to the list. Um, so let's click off of his disgusting of, of uh, Kevin Sabilico's disgusting website. Let's go ahead now and look at um, about, read about Kevin Shin. So it says here. What is this? Okay, so Oceansides, Oceanside and, and I don't care if he's, so, so let's just read this. I don't know if he's lives in Carlsbad, but he had to live in Carlsbad to be running for Carlsbad. Um, if he lives in Oceanside, you know, then he needs to be running for Oceanside. I, I'm sorry. Then I have to retract my decision to, to want to be district two. Um, I'm all about following the rules. Okay. So it says here, Oceanside hosts first SoCal Asian and Pacific Islander Festival Oceanside. So now we're to read about this. So here we go. Oceanside, the city, we were to read this. I was gonna read this to you guys. We'd read this together uh, in the next video, but I decided, you know what? Let's just read it now. Let's just read it now. So to get over with. Um, Oceanside, the city celebrated a wide range of cultures for the inaugural Southern California Asian and Pacific Islander Festival on April twenty ninth in downtown Oceanside. Hundreds of people helped kick off the day's opening events for exceeding the expectations of festival co-creators Kevin Shin and Ilma Cam Martinez. The turnout was so good, some of the vendors ran out of food. Wow. The turnout was that good? The idea of, of to have a festival that focused on Asian and Pacific Islander cultures was the brainchild of Chin, who realized more education about different Asian cuisines and cultures was needed after opening the switchboard, a Korean and Hawaiian fusion restaurant in two thousand twenty. The goal is not only to celebrate who we are, but to invite people who don't know how much about our cultures to come, take the festival and learn, taking the festival and learn, Shin said. Shin met Martinez, who leads Kai Halua Oehama Powell Opa uh, Lopa Kahiko, a traditional hula school in Vista, when his wife and children began performing in the group. Wow, this just sounds pretty cool because I'm part Hawaiian. Cause I am from, I was born in Hawaii. The pair formulated plans to create a festival celebrating Asian and Pacific island cultures with help from community partners like Oceanside Museum of Art Executive Director Maria Make- Mega Ming, Megalon, Oceanside Library Director CJ Demento, visit Oceanside Chamber, Oceanside Chamber uh, of commerce and others. Let's see what it says. Held in one of California's fourteen designated cultural districts. The festival highlighted a multi-tiered of cultures, Korean, Chinese, Japanese, Samoan, Hawaiian and Filipino uh, through food, martial arts performances and art. The festival's theme was the spirit of the rabbit, a symbol of longevity, peace and prosperity in many Asian cultures. Shin, who is Korean, gave a figurative gold medal to the Japanese culture president at the festival for his Ikabana floral designs and sake testing at the museum. Powerful ta- taiko drum series and martial arts demonstrations by San Diego Sumo Club Hanusum. Los Angeles based art instructor Haitian Kevin Shin's father displayed his color color calli- calligraphy and Moana men, and Hawa paintings, a traditional Korean folk art at the festival. Martinez's hula school kicked off the day with several traditional and contemporary hulas featuring multiple generations of dancers. Shin's wife and children were among performers. That is super cool. Martinez is a mixture of Hawaiian, Chinese, Japanese and Mexican, enjoyed experiencing the festival's blend of both Asian and Pacific cultures, while often lumped together as a part of the census and other data sets. The various culture are, cultures are incredibly unique, Martinez said. After putting this year's festival together in just a few months, Martinez and Shin hope to scale up the festival next year with more time to plan and expand its program. We know it's was, we know this was going to be a creative event that will have a lot lasting, in fact, on community. Martinez said, well, we're really looking forward to next year. So that is super cool. I might have to go next year because you know, because I was born in Hawaii. Um, and so because I was born in Hawaii, I would love to learn more about learn, learn more about my culture of being Hawaiian. Um, so yeah, um, I would love to learn more about it and you know, I know when I read on my own time out loud about the uh, like some Hawaiian words, I botch it sometimes. They have botched it in this video, but it's hard. Um, yeah, so I would, you know, love to learn more about it. I've always been interested in learning more about my culture being part Hawaiian. So, um, so yeah, it's a very interesting. Um, so I'm gonna do some research, but I will look up now, um, real quick here. Just read it to you guys. Um, I'll slip up Kevin Shing real quick here and see Kevin Shin. Here we go. So now we're gonna read about this real quick here. Um, so let's just read this and then call it a day. And then we'll do some research on, um, if he actually lives here in Carlsbad. But um, yeah, so uh, here we go. Let's just read it. So this is Kevin Shin, everybody. So Marine Corps veteran Kevin Shin on several Oceanside businesses, including the switchboard, which earned the seventy sixth Assembly Districts twenty twenty two California Small Business of the Year Award. Uh, and then this is the picture of Kevin Shin. In a very nice suit and tie, by the way. Local veteran flourishes as restaurant, as restaurateur firefighter, community leader. This is by Samantha Nelson on November fifteenth of last year and over a thou- little over a thousand people have uh, read this article so far. So it says here. Over a thou- little over a thousand people have uh read this article so far, so it says here. Oceanside Marine Corps veteran Kevin Shin has struck. A harmonious balance between his duties as a father, husband, first responder, small business owner. And board member of several local organizations. Shin travels from his Carlsbad home for work as a firefighter, as a fire captain in Culver City, Los Angeles County. Back in San Diego, he navigates ownership duties between his popular and exciting Oceanside eateries. And cafes, a switchboard restaurant, art-inspired KNVS Bar and North County Ro- Roastery. And if that isn't enough, Shin also finds time to serve. On the boards of Oceanside Museum of Art, Chamber of Commerce and K O C T Station. Shin, a Los Angeles native, first arrived with County's North San Diego County. As a young Marine stationed at Camp Pendleton despite later being stationed where elsewhere during his military um career. Shin always knew he would return to the area to settle down and raise a family. Now the veteran lives in Carlsbad with his wife Christine and their two young daughters, Kalea and La- Lalani. Shin's first restaurant, the switchboard, opened in two thousand twenty. And amid the uncertainty of the COVID nineteen pandemic. Despite the the challenging circumstances, Shin pulled through successfully making. A name for himself by working with the community leaders and helping promote his fellow business owners. Every, every ounce of effort I gave to the community was reciprocated. We're we're reciprocated, reciprocated back to me, Shin said. The switch, the switchboard, a Korean Hawaiian fusion restaurant, serves the food and beverages for the Finn Hotel. Which is located next door and shares the same historic building, a business partnership that helped. The newly refurbished hotel join. Uh Hilton's Tapestry Collection of Boutique Lodgings. The switchboard pays homage to the building's wartime history. The uh the switchboard pays homage to the building's wartime history as a switchboard. Operating center during World War Two and some of the greatest generation of women. That worked in the historic building, the food is inspired by Shin's family culture. Shin is Korean with uh fa- familo. Fa- fa- familial ties to Hawaii, to Hawaii. Can't pronounce it right right now, sorry. When you think of modern day Hawaiian food, you think of some of the first Asian fusion dishes. From a lot of different Asian countries like Portugal, Shin said. Earlier this year, its only member Tasha Born heard of the award of the switchboard with the seventy-sixth. Assembly District's Small Business of the Year Award. It's. It 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 just floored me, to be honest, Shin said about receiving the award, I was deeply humbled and honored. Hints of local art scene also uh pepper Shin's business. Like the KNVS pronounced canvas, a newer restaurant. And a bar that creates an immersive art gallery pairing culinary dishes with rotating works of art. Can KNVS just launched its latest exhibit, the astronomy, highlighting astro photography. Taken by members of the San Diego Astronomy Association. Among Shin's many passions is coffee roasting. Which led to his opening of the North County's Ro- Roastery in. Partnership with the Noel Family Foundation, the family of sublime lead singer Bradley Noel proceeds. From the Roastery Bradley House blend uh go to the foundation which. Helps those in the music industry struggling with opioid addiction to access affordable treatment. From his thirteen years serving as a marine to his daily life as a father. Business owner and fire captain, Shin feels like everything has come to full circle. As a young adult, I always, as as a young adult, I was raised here by the Ramy- by the Marine Corps in Oceanside. So to kind of come back and help revitalize this area. And feel like I'm coming, I'm uh completing something I didn't think I was going to do here, Shin said. So basically um. You know, he's uh travels a lot. So you know. We'll talk more about. What is gonna be the best decision between Kevin Shin? Uh Carolyn Luna and Mona Gacken, um so, yeah, um. So yeah, um stay tuned, guys, like, comment, subscribe, share, and um we'll talk more about all this later, all right? Peace.